Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:38. Uh, we'll start off with...
Two to four?
We don't even have it on here, agenda amendments. Oh yeah. Well, we'll start off with agenda amendments, cause uh, uh, Rick would like to discuss about what to do with the walking path or goes through our parking lot, especially with the bond coming up.
Yep, uh, something we've talked about for a few years now. It's all been in limbo with the parking lot. Uh, we have bond ties, parking lot projects, going to go through. Personally, I think it's the perfect time to start discussing it. Talking with Richard at our RAC meeting one, uh, last month. Probably should have something discussed, written in writing. I don't know how the procedure will be, but um, it's that way, it's not, uh, an unknown when uh, when the property is governed by the merge board.
Is RISE still gonna be involved?
RISE, uh, Heidi talked to RISE, and there should be some help available, whether monetary or, or uh, labor wise, so they are, they are entrusted in helping to facilitate it.
The challenge is just, we, we can't lose any parking spots, so we'll have to, we'll definitely work together and see if we can find something that's applicable for both of us.
I just think it's gonna bring us there. The only problem I got is, is that, is it gonna bring the cars back, and our buses still gonna be able to get around, you know?
I think, uh, we're working on it.
Especially right here, I, I don't think it's too bad when you get down, down farther, closer to the arena, but right here, it looks like it could be tight.
Yeah, it's gonna be tight, and my thought was, I looked at it there, a year ago now, and you know, what we lose with the pond would be gained, you know, if you lose two spots here to get the pond.
Oh, it is our pond, yeah. Swirly pool.
Yeah, swirly pond, or whatever you want, Cinco.
Yeah.
Um, so, I don't know how we will wanna proceed, but you know.
Also gonna have to figure out where our property line is, heading that way, towards the road, you know, with the other landowner type thing.
Well, when we discussed this, like, a year ago, a year and a half ago, uh, a senior member of our community told me that we own the fence, definitely, so that's, uh, that's our property line, is the fence, the six by six fence, not the stockade fence. So, then like Richard said, right here is about the only place that I, I'm worried that it's just gonna be too tight. But I, I'm not saying I'm against it, I, I just, it's just something we can definitely start talking about.
Yeah, I just, you know, I want it on the radar, so that way, like I said, when that merge board comes, it's, I know there's gonna be still Highgate members on that merge board, but um, you know, it's nothing. We haven't talked about it for three years, and why would we talk about it now, type of thing, so.
Yeah.
That was all that, I, I, I don't know. Going forward, we probably have to wait till, you know, we get closer to getting some sort of design with the parking lot.
Yeah, that'll probably be next winter.
It will, that's on.
And the, the water, um, stormwater project too, they'll be doing design too, so those things will dovetail. They'll be important to make sure, you know, where the, we're talking about making a more impervious surface, really, so that'll be an important part of the whole thing.
And well, that stormwater's gonna run right where that walking path is, is it, a lot of it?
Well, they're gonna have multiple designs, some of them could be under the parking lot chambers.
Oh, yeah.
So, there's all kinds of options. Um, it looks as if the state would be the one that would fund, you know, they, they're really pushing grants, so schools don't have to pay for any of that. Um, but, we told them about the parking lot.
Yeah.
Now, you know, and that we just got a bond, and that we weren't gonna, uh, have, you know, that they had to be in concert with one another, and they should be, so keeping the walking path on that radar too, would be important.
Yeah, sure.
And then, uh, on walking path, uh, we, I know, last year, we mowed around the path that we talked to, is that something that the board's gonna be willing to let us do? I got this.
I think it's, uh, did it get used much?
I don't know, to be honest with you.
I know, I know a couple people mentioned that they went out there and it got pretty wet, once you get down to the further end, you know, and uh, it, it would be nice if we could follow it around, you know, in the summer, it dries up back there pretty good, and Mr. Meche went in, we went in last fall, and there were a couple of big piles of uh, soil over by my place, he spread it all in the ditches, so it might be better, you know?
There was one less spot on, uh, between that property and RJ's field that gets flat, and I mean, if we have to-
He filled that in.
Fill it in, or put a small cover in, that we would have that access to something that the town has replaced somewhere else, you know?
Does, uh, MBU still plan on putting cows there this summer?
I li- I haven't talked to anybody, I, I know, it, it was talked about, and I know the last time I talked, they were, they were talking about it, but I haven't, lately I haven't, uh.
Cause that would be my only issue, I'm wondering if we don't wanna mix cows and people.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I agree.
Cause that can go bad, both ways, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, on to public comments.
I think, um, Ms. H wanted to-
I, I'm, I'm getting there.
Okay.
We're on public, we're, she's, she's got her own special-
She's got her own-
Well, I see that, but she, she wanted to make sure, but you know.
Connie, you got it?
Just here to listen.
Okay. So, uh, I guess we're on to stage lighting upgrades, Ernie.
Good evening, thank you for taking the time, I know you guys are so busy. Um, next year I retire, and before I retire, I want to, I have to bow out gracefully, cause I'll be sixty-five, and I think you have to, just like the stage, you have to, no one to bow. Um, but, I would love to, um, have lights on our stage. The, I think these are the original lights, that the building was first, um, put together, and so they're as old as Moses. And I had, at one time, um, I had talked to somebody, and they said it was gonna cost, you know, a small fortune, which, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not one that was gonna come to ask for money. And I was talking to my son, who is in Burbank and deals with all this stuff, he goes, "Ma, why do you need all this money? All you need is split," and I talked to Chris about this, like, three dimmer switches, and maybe if we could have two spotlights, that's it. And I know I talked to Mr. Hartnett, and his, his idea was, you know, we needed microphones, but microphones, they break, and, you know, you have them for a couple of years, and I'd like to have something that stays, you know? And, um, so, um, through little fundraisers, we have, we established about a little account with Hat, Hat Get Actors Theater, and I heard we have like twenty-six hundred dollars, and I was like, whoa. But then, the PTKO did a fundraiser, um, and they raised, I don't know how much money, and then Mr. Hartnett also spoke about a small grant, so we have the money. So, um, I'm just asking if we can have the go-ahead and do something, nothing, you know, I don't want anything expensive, I want something that's, you know, no one's gonna break. I know we used to have, as you remember, the old box, we all remember the box, the, all the different lights, and we took that out years ago. We used to have a linoleum stage, and we took that out, now we have a carpet that's in really sad shape, but if we could do the lights, maybe we can do something with the floor, but, that's it. I think the money's here, I think we have the money now.
The floor, I believe, we're gonna be doing through the bond, because there's, underneath, that old linoleum is still there, and that has asbestos in it, so we're doing the asbestos-
We're gonna have to do it in a bay.
We're gonna have to fix it through the bond, the floor's getting fixed through the bond, so I'm trying to spit out.
Yeah, cause that carpet is, I take care of it, but everybody else is on that stage. I've always wanted to come to the board and say, is there any way, cause I think it's such a, it's such a dangerous thing to have kids just run up on that stage, you know, and I always tell all my actors, tell everybody if they're on that stage to get off, unless there's an adult, because in the past, we've had some bad accidents, one very serious, years and years ago. So, I've always wanted to come to you and say, is there any way we can, you know, just say, please stay off the stage, you know, it's not, and the children are always on that stage, you know, and you have the well, where the, where the steps are.
Oh yeah.
You know, it's, it's very dangerous if it's not supervised, but, anyway, the big thing is if we can get the lights, I'd love to.
So, Ernie, do you have a, enough money without, you, you could get any help from us, or?
No, I, I don't think we need any, I, that, that's the cool thing, I don't think we need any money from you, I just want the permission, and the, you know, manpower to put it in, you know? Be awesome, because we really struggle with lights, and the lights are very poor on the stage. And we, you know, we do, um, bring the kids a lot to the floor, you know, for better lighting and stuff, but it'd be awesome if we had decent lighting on the stage.
And your fundraiser going on right now, that hasn't been settled out yet, right?
Right. And I think, Mr. Hartnett, what was it, like five hundred dollars we had?
Five hundred dollars.
Yeah, we have, I mean, Chris, I think we were talking about maybe five thousand dollars for lights, something like that.
I don't think it'd be that much.
Right, so not bad.
You're gonna need electrician?
To do the work?
You know one?
No.
I can't do it on a commercial movement.
Okay. Yes, we will then.
Wish to have my-
Everybody likes keeping it family.
Yeah, I wish to have my license, but.
Uh, go ahead.
Hey, can I make a motion?
Yes.
That, uh, we give her the okay to, uh, put the lights in, and, uh, the school covers the electrician.
I'll second to that.
Does it go?
Yay, thank you so very much, I really appreciate it.
We haven't voted yet.
Thank you for your time, you're very busy.
Go ahead, say what you're gonna say.
Okay, wait a minute, so, to approve the stage lighting, and then we'll pay for the labor?
Yeah.
So, the lighting to be funded by Hat, and the labor to be funded by the board, or the budget. Uh, any discussion? Uh, hearing done, all those in favor of approving the motion, uh, same by by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you very much.
Uh, let's see, future meetings, uh, we have our first informational meeting of the merge board, the MVSD, it'll be, uh, the first of two informational meetings for our vote on April thirtieth. The meeting will be on April fifteenth, in the MBU library at six P M. And then, we'll also have a second one on April twenty-seventh?
Yes.
At ten A M., it's a Saturday, uh, that one will be three days before the vote. And then, on May first, we'll either have an MVSD meeting, or a supervisor union board meeting, not sure which yet, most likely be MBUSD. And then our next Highgate board meeting would be May ninth at six thirty here.
How many more of them we're gonna have?
Highgate meeting?
Yeah.
Till June. You're not done yet, but.
You're counting down.
Huh?
You just keep wanting to know.
I'm just curious.
On that, on that question, um, is, I know I brought it up at the SU meeting, um, but is there any, that extension, is that still in limbo?
It's very much in limbo, because now, uh, House and Senate are fighting over it. Um, the Senate revised, uh, revised the House's version, um, House doesn't like that, the Senate did that, so, they're kinda-
They shot it down?
Using last night's paper, that they're duking it out.
Yeah, they're duking it out, they haven't shot it down yet, though.
The House did.
Well, they did.
Yeah, wasn't that in the paper, when I read it, right?
I, I was reading it before I came here.
Yeah, it's not, it's not going well.
Okay, uh, my follow-up question was, is how, I asked the SU board the same question, was how did we feel, or the board members feel about taking the opportunity, if it given, to extend or run under the local?
Like until the, that-
And, and, no, and-
I, I'm struggling with it, to be honest with you, cause a while ago, I'd say, extend, you know, was a hands-down decision, wouldn't even think about it, now, the longer we go in this process, the, I don't know. You know, it depends how long it takes them to make a decision, too.
The only thing I, I see a positive of is, you have two point three million dollar bond, that'd be a whole lot easier to run at the low, you know, oversee at the local than that through a merge board.
I don't know if I a hundred percent agree, and, because the, wow, I, I get what you're saying, but the, what I like about it is, in the bond language, it is dedicated for this school, so it's not, it has to be used for what we already decided to use it for, more or less, you know, I mean, at this point, it's decisions on who we choose to do the work.
And what products you-
Right, right. Uh, okay, on to adopting meeting minutes for February fourteenth and March fourth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for February fourteenth.
Second? Discussion? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor of adopting February fourteenth minutes, uh, same by by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. And then, uh, March fourth.
I'll make that motion.
No second to that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting March fourth, uh, meeting minutes, same by by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Principals report.
So, I'd like to just begin by letting you know that, um, Chris Palmer Wood was planning on being here, but, um, we did learn this morning of the untimely death of the superintendent of Franklin West Supervisor Union, Ned Kirsch, um, and Chris worked in that district, and worked under Ned, and so after school, um, Chris stuck around for class placement, and then went down to be with fellow administrators down in that district, so, otherwise, he would've been here, so, anyway. I did not know Ned, Julie probably knew Ned better than I did, but it was a very well-respected superintendent, so. Okay, so I'll just go through, um, kind of cursory, academic proficiency, we had our spring conferences, uh, spring parent conferences recently, we had over ninety percent, um, participation, and if you count the conferences that were before the actual conference, um, day and evening, and then those that happened afterwards, maybe a, a special education meeting, um, or what have you, or parents that couldn't make it on that day, it was well over ninety percent, so a really great turnout, um, and, uh, teachers did a great job using CSO to make sure that parents got in, Anna, Anna Yates and Jess Paquette did a lot of phone calling up front, you know, we kind of look at that pick-a-time, read out a couple weeks ahead of time, and say, okay, where are we? We check it a week before, where are we? Um, and then we start, um, making phone calls if we haven't heard from parents about conferences, so, there's a fair amount of effort to make sure that everyone gets in, although, um, the percentage is really pretty high, so I want to thank the teachers for doing that, and, and parents for investing in your children's education. Um, there's a fair amount of information from Chris about task teams, I'm not gonna go into it a whole lot, but, um, it's something that he started this year, uh, kind of feeling that that's how a team, or a school stays, continues to stay better and better, is you take on new things as they come up, um, and so, this year, we're, we have task teams on science and writing, a task team on the first thirty minutes of the day, a task team on literacy and math night, a staff, a, a task team on staff and student wellness, a task team on the maker space, um, PBIS tier one, and then student leadership. So every, every, um, staff member is a member of one of those task teams, and they, and included a form at the end that basically shows, uh, the process of what they, what they end up with, a proposal for action. So after they study a particular issue, and I'll just use maybe, you know, literacy and math night, so that's a, that's a, a night that's gonna happen next month, um, and they wanted to just put thoughts and ideas together about how to get people in, uh, parents in for, and students, families in, for, to learn a little bit more about, uh, math and literacy. And, so that's an example of a task team that will serve its purpose, and then will stop, they'll cease to exist, um, and maybe move on to another task team. So, um, those have been, I think, interesting, I think some may be bearing more fruit than others, but it's the first year we've tried it, so, um, we're gonna kind of discuss that at the continuous improvement team, and see where we go with task teams, but, um, generally speaking, it's been great to see teachers get together, um, and do some, do some great work. Chris also wrote in a fairly lengthy section on behavior, and, um, and I do think that that's important, so that's under Positive Climate for Learning. So that's on the third page, and basically, um, he highlighted the areas of growth, high level behaviors, things like fights, bullying, harassment, not that we have a lot of them, but even if you have a few, those are pretty significant, and they, and they really hurt a school, um, that we feel the effects significantly when those things happen, but they're down significantly, our PBIS data shows, um, that, um, that we are doing better, um, the staff perception has demonstrated an improvement, so, not necessarily what the data shows, but how do staff feel about behavior? And that showed that, um, that staff feel we're getting better, it went from twenty-seven to forty-eight percent, and then those, then some of the staff that thought we needed, perhaps more harsher consequences, dropped from seventy-two percent to fifty-one percent from last year to this year. So, the, the staff perceptions are better. Um, at the last half-day-to-day that we did, um, we actually did do, spent a fair amount of time about behavior, and, um, we did a little exercise, and, uh, out of our nineteen classrooms, there were four classrooms where the teachers felt that they experienced, uh, a more stress than we want them to, and they felt that, that the behaviors were still too much of a problem. Um, fifteen either, and fifteen was kind of split in half, some teachers are feeling they're just having a wonderful year, um, and there's very low stress, and the other half are somewhere in the middle, but not as, you know, uh, things are going well, but they could, it's not stress-free, um, but, so we're really trying to focus on those, you know, those four classes where the teachers are feeling like, this is really too much stress for me as a teacher. So, um, and then, I think in connection with that, one of the areas is that, um, the behaviors that, that those teachers are experiencing are the behaviors that we call kind of low-level behaviors, they're, they're not fighting, they're not, you know, bullying, they're not, um, you know, kind of our major behaviors, they're, they're considered actually minor behaviors, but they're, they're, they're constant, they're interruptions, um, kids who can't focus and, and stay, and stay focused, um, and are up and moving, and, or blurting out, or, so lots of little things that, that add up to a big thing, and the big thing is that it, it impacts teacher momentum, and kids' ability to stay focused on something. And so that's really what our, our, our net, our target is next, is to say, what do we do? And, you know, we've got some teachers that are trying lots of different things, you know, we have teachers that set up blurring boards, um, and set a goal, you know, so when a kid, child blurts out something that, without being called on, or anything, that a little tally goes up, and they try to, it's not meant to be punitive, it's more of a, let's keep track, let's be aware, and if we can beat our target, you know, maybe we have a class celebration, or something. So, um, there are a number of attempts being made to try this low-level behavior, um, that really does, does impact teachers' ability to, um, instruct a lesson the way they would like to instruct it. And, and I just, all I can say is, whatever your respective work is, if you can imagine whether you're building a house, um, and then, you know, every three minutes, you gotta stop to, to, to do something that takes you away from what you were doing, you, you, you got a sense of how challenging that can be, and, and, and that's why that is, um, even though they're minor behaviors, it's a, it's a big consideration for us, because we want our teachers to do what they're supposed to do. Um, but at the same time, you know, suspend kids for blurting, you know, um, that type of thing, so we're, we're really exploring those ways that will help those teachers be able to just teach their lesson, and kids to learn, um, without, you know, with less distraction and interruption, so we'll sort of keep you posted on that. Ernie, I'll put you on the spot, did I capture that well?
Yes, sir, I think so, it's true, you know?
Okay, all right, thanks, I appreciate that. Um, school safety, um, I, I can't say a lot on air, but we did, we did rehearse a, another drill today, um, I, I will just say, Chris Palmer has done an amazing job in making us safer in our school, he has really started at the very basics and worked our way up to practicing drills with less and less information ahead of time for teachers, um, to the point where our next drill will be, they don't, they don't get any notice at all whatsoever, and they've gotta make decisions. Um, today, we happen to have two state police officers who joined us just to observe, this is always great to have them here, uh, and, 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 they've been around a lot, they just, they come by regularly, um, and come in and just to say hello, but today, they came back specifically because we invited them for our drill, uh, to see that, and we're gonna analyze the data from what teachers did today. Even though they knew, uh, what the scenario was gonna be, they, they, they didn't share what they were, how they were gonna respond to it, so now that we've observed how they responded to it, we'll kind of look at that information and say, okay, um, did that, was that the right response? Cause we gave them a certain area, and teachers from one area would respond one way to it, and if teachers were in a part of the building pretty far away from that area, they might respond totally differently. Um, and so we'll look at that data, but Chris has really spearheaded that, that all, and, um, by next month, we will have completed sort of a full cycle, going to a completely unannounced, um, drill, and we still let kids know it's a drill, um, but, um, it'll be completely unannounced, and a, a real good rehearsal of if, you know, there ever was a tragedy or a crisis here, so he's done a great job. And then lastly, we really, we're, we're, right now, we're putting a lot of effort into our class placement process for next year. This is something that we've done a little differently the past three years, or since I've been here, um, where, um, teachers get together, and from a grade level, and they construct balanced classes without knowing who the teacher's gonna be. So if we know there are three second grade, today, for instance, we did third grade, so we have teacher, we know there are three classes, so we have teacher one, teacher two, teacher three, and we all have stickies with all the kids' names on them, with a little information about each kid, about maybe their math, or literacy, any propensities for behaviors, and we really try to create balanced classes, and then, um, Chris and I will be the ones that put the teacher's name at the top later, um, so teachers don't have any idea who they're sending their kids to, um, and the idea is that we really create some balance, and get kids into classes with other kids they haven't been in class with before, um, mixing boys, the right number of boys and girls, um, and the ultimate goal, of course, is when a parent says, "I want that teacher," and I say, "I'm sorry, we don't do it that way," it does, it shouldn't matter who your teacher is, because every teacher here is gonna be able to deliver the curriculum, um, that, that every child's entitled to. And I will say, that wasn't quite the case four years ago, um, where teachers, you know, did teach a little bit more of things they might be more comfortable with, I think now our adherence to the curriculum is really consistent, our teachers are working really closely together at every grade level, um, so it really, you know, it really does matter, and I can say, it really shouldn't matter who your, who your child has, whatever class, whatever teacher- Whatever class, whatever teacher, we're all on the same page. That's the goal, anyway. And we're definitely pretty far along towards that with this, with this process. That being said, the one thing we're, we're, we're testing a little bit this year is that, you know, we do this class placement in April. And sometimes what looks like it's all set in April is, are not the same students you have in August. And we, we have experienced a little bit more transience lately. People that moved out over the summer that we didn't know were moving out, and people that moved in over the summer that we didn't know about. And, and it's made it a little challenging. For instance, this year in third grade, a, a teacher was supposed to have 14 students, four had moved out. We didn't know. And so one classroom teacher had 14, one had 10. And we said, all right, well, we can't do much about it now, but the next students that moved in all went to that same teacher, which isn't always a great formula. And so it comes, sometimes it results in not having that balance you want. So we're experimenting a little bit with maybe holding off a little bit, rechecking in early June, make sure all the kids, have we heard anything? Have we heard anything about people moving? And possibly even waiting for August for the teacher to call the parents and say, I'm your teacher, can I schedule a conference with you next week for our parent conferences in August? Just to make sure that not, not too much shifting has gone on. We haven't decided on that definitely, but we really wanna make sure that our classes, that we don't make any big glaring mistakes between April and then who shows up at our school in August. So it's a little tricky. Anyway, so we're, we're experimenting a little bit with that. And if you have any questions?
Good job.
Sounds good.
Can I talk?
Comment first.
Sure.
I attended a parent-teacher conference just a couple weeks back.
Yeah.
And I will say it's probably the best parent-teacher conference that I've attended since my son was going through. It wasn't for him, but the right people, the right people from the staff were there, you know? They, they knew they had, they were gonna be there, they didn't have four other places they had to hurry up and get to. It was a very healthy discussion.
I agree. I, I had the same.
So that does, just, just to say that one of the things that, that helps is our class sizes do allow for teachers to spend 20 to 30 minutes. You know, I've been in some schools where literally you've got 10 minutes and, and, you know, it's just boom, 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 you gotta, you gotta go. If these, these can be attended by lots of different people. So if a student is having some work done with a math interventionist, they can be there at that meeting. So our, our conferences are great and I, and I've been very impressed with how they go and how, what teachers put into them and what kind of information is relayed to, to the parent at the, so I appreciate the feedback.
No, that's good.
And then the only question I had is, I know at MBU, they're doing a, I don't know how often they're doing it, but they're doing a coffee and conversation with administration. And I attended one, I don't know, a couple weeks ago. And, and, you know, I asked the administrators how the turnout's been, how they, you know? And they, I don't know if we put any thought into it at Highgate School, but it, it, from hearing their feedback, it sounds like it, you know, it's a welcoming atmosphere. I know I can come in and talk to you guys anytime, but there's others that, it makes you feel like they're putting it out or by asking to have a, you know, and it's informal, a coffee conversation. I don't know what your thought on that?
Yeah, I don't drink coffee, so I don't know. We'll have to think of something else. No.
I would've taken that.
Definitely, definitely can, can do that. It, it has been done at schools. Particularly, it's done in, for kindergarten, new, or new parents to the school. But I can certainly talk to MBU and see what approach they've taken. Yeah, I'd love the opportunity to have anyone that wants to come in, but sometimes they won't unless they're invited. So definitely can do that.
Thank you.
Pat, I just, I just wanna say, I, I came to the, last Friday, to the community thing, and I thought that was great. The singing, the, it gives everybody a little bit of life, the walking to school, then I, I thought, you know, they didn't do that when I went to school, have all that good stuff. I, I thought it was great, you know? I even, rock, paper, scissors. I, I, that, next Saturday morning, I tried it out on my track team, it worked good, you know? So, you know, keep up the good work. I, I think that's great. And I think Craig did a great job. You know, I, I like that.
Yeah.
And it got to see his parents there, and I think that's a great community thing, like, you know, sees what the kids are doing and...
So, the community gatherings.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so that, you know, something Chris has really emphasized a lot. And it is great when we get, people are able to come in. So it's not coffee, but, you know, they, that's what, that's when it would be, in the morning. And they come in, that was a good, that was a great gathering. You know, when you do them that often, some are better than others, but that was, and that was without Hawthorne, our hawk, right? Who was, who was not back from, from hibernating somewhere.
He did come.
What's that?
He did come.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
Was it the one before that there was though?
Um, no, he's, he's pretty good.
Okay.
He's, he's pretty regular.
I didn't see him last week.
But that was a, that was a, a high-energy one. That was great.
Yeah. And, and the kids seem to get right into it and then...
They do.
You know, they put eggs up and then...
Yeah.
For Easter and all that, yeah, I think that was...
Well, those are hawks' eggs. So those, each egg represents a number of coins kids have earned for positive behavior. And so once, you know, every community gathering, they, you know, kids from different grade levels bring up their eggs. And when they reach, when they fill a certain level in the cage, and Hawthorne gets a, a hawk's eye view of it, they decide whether or not there's a school-wide celebration for, for, for good behavior. So that's what that's about. But those coins become tickets and the tickets go in the eggs. And that means, so I forgot, how much is an egg, like, do you know?
It's on the classroom, like, we, our classroom goal is once we fill the tour with 100 eggs. But I think what, what's happened here too is because we're not allowed to have food anymore during the day, we had to come up with some real innovative ideas. Like, we couldn't even imagine what Halloween was gonna be like without candy.
Oh, yeah.
Or Christmas, or Valentine's Day. And the dollar store is a good friend, you know? But we all had to come up with innovative ideas. We couldn't do ice cream anymore. And Craig's come up with some great ideas, like we had full, full school pajama day. And rock, scissors, paper was one of those rewards, you know? But he comes up with some great ideas, like he had to paint, he had to dye his hair pink. Kids love that, you know? So, and we have a lot of fun, you know, but it's...
That change was in response to our, a number of students now with pretty severe allergies.
Right. So really...
Birthdays and all that too.
Yeah. Teachers, teachers have been phenomenal about coming up with different ways to recognize kids other than with, other than with food.
Valentine's Day was pretty creative.
Yeah.
Some nice things came out of that.
Lot of different, well, there are a lot of different ideas for each holiday that, that teachers are coming up with. So it's, it, it was not easy at first, but I think we're getting used to it.
Yeah.
But it is, on April, I will say, on April Fool's Day, I walked in to the office and there was a pan, a bake, a baking pan and with tin foil over the top. And it said brownies on it. And I was like, my first thought was, I, we gotta get, I gotta get that off the counter. And then my second thought was, I'd like one. And I opened it up and it was April Fools.
Brownies.
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 It was full, yes, thank you, it was full of brown cutout letters of E's, yes, so, anyway.
Gotcha.
They did, they got...
It's good that you put it on social media for people out here.
Yeah.
Time to, I watch it.
Yep, nice.
Very good.
Okay.
Any other questions for Pat? Okay, on to the business report. Check warrants.
I have those warrants. Accounts payable totaling $145,640.73. Payroll checks totaling $9,018.66. Payroll other disbursements, which would be direct deposits, federal and state taxes, Payroll deductions, which include health and dental, retirement dues, et cetera, $74,106.71.
Oh, entertain a motion to accept that?
Michael, motion?
I'll second it.
All look good? Okay. Hello's in favor of accepting the check warrants for an amount of $418,431.67. Same five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Ooh, the easy one, local budget review.
Can we actually change the order?
Sure.
Get the easy ones out of the way first, maybe? That would be helpful for me. It's where my brain is right now.
So hot lunch program update.
Okay, so we've been monitoring the program all year. As we know, we changed this year, our food service management contract went to a fixed flat rate con, basis contract from a cost reimbursement. It's the first time all schools in the state are doing that, and that's because the state has told us that we have to move to a fixed flat rate contract. The ABY has realized that they bid too low. They are currently losing money on the program. One, I think that, you know, they're trying to figure out this new system as well, and they're, they probably just underbid slightly. We try to keep our hot lunch prices as low as we possibly can, and so that's another factor. And anytime the economy starts to improve even a little bit, less people qualify for free reduced-price lunch, and therefore, our free reduced-price lunch percentage goes down, and then you get less reimbursement from the federal and state government. So all of those factors are leading to a phone call I received from Mr. Underwood, letting us know that he's going to be sending us a letter and asking us that we go back out to bid again and start again from scratch next year, rather than the possibility of the four-year, one, uh, four, one-year extensions that we typically get. We may have been looking at that anyway, because our, even our other schools are having similar issues, even with cost reimbursable programs, just with the factors I talked about. People are having that impact. With the free reduced-price percentage going below 40%, you start to see these kinds of cash flow problems, especially when you're serving kids free breakfast.
Now, in light of the possible merge, would we be re, uh, re, re-putting this out to bid anyway?
We, I think, I believe that we could have still done a one-year extension. The one-year, it's not, it's a renewal, I'm sorry, you're allowed those one-year renewals. I think we could have. We were toying with the idea of maybe going out to bid for some of the schools together. I mean, they're separate contracts, but...
Yeah, lumping them together.
Lumping them together to see if that would help us also get some other bids. Not that we're not happy with our current provider, but it's nice to have some competitiveness. But we're still looking at that, and, and the merger is another factor. So I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that this is happening. Every year, because of the paid lunch equity calculation I have to do, we have to increase hot lunch prices a certain amount. I think it's usually around 10 cents. But we are always very mindful of the impact of families and the quality of the program. I was assured by Mr. Underwood that we would not see any change in the quality of the program between now and the end of the year, even though there is a loss currently being taken on the program. And I trust that that is the case, because participation is necessary or the program will just do worse. But I just wanna let, little food for thought right now, just to put that on your radar. I'm not sure how we're gonna handle it yet, or exactly when that's gonna happen or how we're, but before July, we'll have to figure that out. So just wanted to let you know.
Does anybody know how many providers are out there besides the ABY?
There's, the state provides a list. There's like three others that are national companies, like Cafe Services, and most of them provide, you know, much larger facilities with food service management, like hospitals, universities, you know, where there's tens of thousands of people that they're feeding. So it's tough for us to get competitive bids from anyone else when it's 300 kids a day. But that's why I'm thinking if we pulled them together, possibly. We, we solicit from those people every year, or we try to for bids, but they typically never bid.
Probably don't wanna mess with us, 'cause we're too small.
I never even get usually emails or phone calls back.
Yeah.
Yep. We, we ventured down that road before, and, and I remember you talking about it, but you just said 300 kids per day. That's just here.
Right, that's what I'm saying. But right now, they're all separate contracts, and they still would be separate contracts, but they're all in different rotations right now.
Yeah.
So if we did merge, or potentially maybe, even if we didn't merge, I'd look at trying to get them on the same cycle, now that they will all have to move to fixed price because of the state's requiring that.
So is it all the elementary schools that do, use the ABY?
Non-Franklin, all the schools in our SEU except for Franklin are contracting with a food service management company right now.
And Franklin has their own in-house.
Yes.
That's what I was gonna ask too.
Yeah. So, just, just putting that on your radar, because I did receive that phone call, and we will be getting a letter, I think, soon. It impacts lots of things. When your free reduced-price percentage drops below 40, it's your fresh fruit and vegetable grant, it's your CACFP, which is your supper program with the after-school program, and your hot lunch, which is breakfast and lunch. So it's, you know, it's not just lunch.
Right. I really think they could do a spot for these kids.
More to come on that.
Bond anticipation rates.
Anticipation, okay. So, as I explained last month in talking with bond counsel, now that you have an approved bond vote, and because of the upcoming potential merger, in order for the debt to be shared across the new school district and all the towns that belong to that new school district, we have to actually solidify actual debt before June, uh, June 30. So I gathered those bond rates as the board had said that I could. Four banks replied. Union Bank came in at 2.23. People's United was 2.05. These are percentages. Community Bank came in for Highgate at 1.45. That's your current operating account bank. And People's Trust Company at 1.6. Community Bank, I had to go out for two different schools. Sheldon's in the same boat, gave a much higher rate for Sheldon than, it was actually the highest, the 2.6% that I received. So I guess my recommendation would be either Community Bank or People's Trust, whatever your preference is. We probably will not be having to actually borrow, as we talked about, and I was pretty upfront with the banks about that. But they're also aware that if we do merge, we're gonna be looking for a new bank for this giant pool of money and this giant budget we're gonna be managing. So they were willing to work with us.
I'm sure.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm not worried about that very small difference in the, in the interest rate. But I could see either way. I guess it's a little bit easier to work with People's Trust Company, 'cause they're right down the road from us. But if you wanna go with Community Bank, 'cause that's the bank your operating account was with, that's fine too.
It's the board's pleasure on that one.
I'm gonna abstain. From board's favor.
Well, I, I'm comfortable with People's Trust, to be honest with you. It's local, like you said, just on the road. And I think we've worked with them before. I understand what you're saying about the community national having a piece of our pie already, but, you know, 1.6 to 2.6 is kind of a lot of money, really.
No, it wouldn't be 2.6. That's, Sheldon would have been 2.6. They said for us was 1.6.
1.45, because you're a customer right now.
Okay, yeah.
But I have to work with People's Trust for one, which is fine. It's not a big deal, but...
I thought, I had PTC at 1.6, I thought you said.
1.6, and Community Bank gave 1.45 for Highgate, because you're a current customer, but they gave me 2.6 for Sheldon, because they weren't. It's six to one, half dozen the other.
I agree.
I don't...
I'd say we stay with who we work with.
I guess you're right, yeah.
Yeah. So motion to, do you need a motion to stay with them?
Yes, um, to award this to them, yes.
I'll entertain a motion to award the...
Bond anticipation note.
Thank you. Bond anticipation note to Community Bank.
I'll make that motion.
Um, can you just include the amount, the 2.32 million?
Two, what?
Sorry, 1.7 wrong school.
Yeah, 2.1.7 million, sorry.
No?
No, we're 2.3.
We're 2.3. Ocean, 1.7 is...
You're still in the wrong school, Laura.
No, she, I'm confused, because they wrote it wrong. So I'm gonna have to have them amend their ratios.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Looking at, it says Highgate right next to the number I'm looking at, so I will have them... them do that.
So, the motion says, uh, to include the two point three million bonds. Two point three-two million dollar bond anticipated rates with Community National, Steve first and a second. That has to be you. Discussion? All those in favor, favor of, uh, of the motion, same five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So, motion carries three, zero, one.
And I will bring those documents to the, um, next board meeting. So, to have signatures.
See, that's... See, the reason Dave abstained is because his son works for Community Bank, which also means my brother-in-law works for Community Bank, so this is one of those weird, should I be abstaining as well?
You're not personally benefiting from...
No, no.
And we're not dealing with him either, so, I mean, we're dealing with the bank he worked at, but...
Yeah, so family members wouldn't be personally benefiting either, so... Yeah, no, it's, it's fine.
Okay.
Local, small community, that's kinda hard. Everybody's, no, somebody who works somewhere, yes, absolutely.
Somebody's gotta work somewhere, right?
I just abstained.
Aye.
Uh, so that'll be enough for us to, that'll be, uh, assumed debt across the merger by doing that?
According to our bond, bond counsel, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, working very closely with him, because this is uncharted territory. And, and it, it might have, his answer to me was, even if you didn't do this, it might be. So, this, this is a sure thing.
So, yeah, this is the guarantee, whereas the other way, we're not sure. Okay, so, uh, back to local budget reviews.
Okay, so, the draft that I handed out is draft three, local without Sheldon, is what are titled this draft. We are assuming at this point in time that Sheldon will not be part of Franklin Northwest, or that's the premise that we're working under right now, um, and that does impact some of your assessments, which is why I'm highlighting that. If Sheldon were to stay within our SU or within our new school district, things would look differently. On the far right, you'll see a variance from the MVSD proposal, instead of a variance from your last draft, aye, do you want one?
Do you have one more?
Sorry, I meant to give you one earlier.
Thank you.
Would you like one, Connie?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, you're out of my vision.
Of course, it's okay for you to have one. You've looked at one of them before, haven't you?
Um, and the reason I, I use the, the variance from the MVSD proposal was because, basically, what we did was take your last drafts, pretty much, that you had seen, with a few minor changes, and then we brought that to the temporary transition board, and I'm using this column now as a way to track what I'm, what changes we, we make between. So, I'll just start highlighting, um, some of the things that have impacted your bottom line, and then I also handed out a tax rate, um, document that we can go over as well. Um, if we're looking at page one, instructional programs, um, I just wanted to explain that under teacher salaries, which is the first line, the one-ten line, I had not included your title positions that we had, and we had talked about doing that last time, but I hadn't actually done it yet. So, all of your intervention positions that are funded with title dollars, um, you had, you had one that was not in one point something of another that already was in your budget, are now included in the expenditures here. There will be offsetting revenue in the, at spending calculation, but all of those are in here. Um, that's why you see that giant increase, or it looks like a fairly large increase there. That line also includes the step that's been, um, approved for teachers and, and the, um, new contract. If you go down about halfway, and we start looking in the three hundred object codes, those are purchase services, um, so, you know, we, we continue to, to have changes to out-of-district placements and, uh, CAT workers and, and student services that are being provided, so I've made some adjustments there that account for some of the increases. The same thing in five sixty-five, the tuition, non-special ed, again, out-of-district placements and NCSS stuff, so, um, continuing to update those as closely as we can. Um, after program, after-school program support, excuse me, the three-ten line, um, the newest version of, um, twenty-one C, uh, grant that has now been partially approved, um, actually had a lower allocation for the schools, um, than she had originally handed out, so that's reflecting that change, it's down about twenty thousand from last draft. If we turn the page to special ed, um, and this is your local, your local portion of special ed, which is basically your paraprofessionals, um, overall, we're anticipating that, that, function code to be down about eighty-eight thousand, and that's primarily due to a shift in, um, special ed versus gen ed ratios for paras, um, so it's not really down, it's just a shift more to gen ed at this point in time. The twelve-fourteen function code, early childhood programs, um, you'll notice in the note now, as I said before, says without Sheldon, um, taking Sheldon out of those assessments. It's not dollar for dollar. Your early childhood assessment is based on your grades one through three ADM, that's how it's assessed, um, but, um, it, it, it doesn't work out to dollar by dollar, so the increase is a little bit higher than I think you would have seen if Sheldon was still belonging to our supervisory union. In counseling services, the three hundred line, I've, um, increased to reflect the actuals for the school-based clinician, again, that's a contracted service within NCSS, um, and that contract is a little higher than what I had originally anticipated. Let's flip the page again, page three, under the two-two-one-three, which is instructional staff training, if you remember, there was, um, about eleven hu- eleven thousand five hundred dollars for, um, additional PD added to that line. Some math, primarily, I think, math PD.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And then a little bit for Makerspace. The next page, um, school-wide technology under two-two-two-five, um, since your last draft, and, um, because of some changes in the tech, um, services and employment for the current year that have recently happened, I think, um, Pat's considering a, potentially a different model, but we're not exactly sure about that yet, so there's money in there to support either a tech integration or maybe additional just tech support, if that's not possible, um, but one, the one, one employee is probably not gonna be the, what we go with, so I have money in there basically for two, um, not knowing exactly what positions they'll be in, if that makes sense.
No, we had two at one point, and we've lost them both.
So, we had, yeah, so we had the, um, um... What am I blanking on, the type of certification?
The technical...
Oh, technical integration.
Tech integration, um...
Teacher, yeah.
Mike Weber, uh, who was a certified teacher, um, we did not have that this year. We did have Ethan Kature, who has just recently left, um, and Christie Mitchell has assumed, all of his responsibilities, except she is not working with any teachers on, you know, incorporating technology in the classroom, she's primarily just keeping things up and running right now, which, and I wouldn't say just, I mean, that's, um, she does a great job at it, and we're lucky that, um, we had her in that position, um, sort of as a backup. We, we don't think that we are going to find a tech integrationist at this late date after, um, we're allowed to hire, because that's on hold for now, about, until we settle the merged or unmerged kinds of things. So, we're kinda, we'd like to keep the money there, uh, to see what happens. It's possible that we could find somebody like Ethan again, who can work with teachers, but not teach students. So, the difference again was Mike Weber could actually hold a class and teach students, Ethan could not, but he could certainly work with teachers to show them what was available for technology. Christie Mitchell could do the same, but she honestly is gonna be, have her hands full with just keeping things up and running. So, we're just, we just have some money there, just in case we find somebody that could serve as somebody who can help teachers incorporate more technology, we still need it. Chris, Chris was, you know, obviously very disappointed that, uh, Ethan moved on, because Ethan was gonna be kind of big, uh, in the Makerspace, um, so again, we're, we're, we're just, right now, we're up in the air with Ethan's departure, about where, what does that do to a Makerspace idea? Because we couldn't, we couldn't ask Christie to do that and do tech support. But, we, we also know that it's highly unlikely we're gonna get a certified teacher for technology to come in at a late date. We didn't have a terrible number of applicants last time, when we did it even early, and so, um, and the fact that we had one and then didn't, sometimes worries people about job security, about moving in and taking a job. So, um, that's why we're at that, that number now, we're just not sure, um, and we'll try to keep you update, updated as soon as we know what we can begin looking for.
And we had budgeted for the tech integration position this year, even though they can get filled, so it's not a, it's not causing a large increase, really.
Well, that's kind of my, that was kind of why I brought it up, because it's not that we're adding a position, we're just trying to replenish what we lost.
Figure out, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, the only other thing that, um, under technology is the seven hundred line, um, also has been increased about seventy-five hundred dollars, and there is some infrastructure, um, needs, along with a small amount for, um, Makerspace equipment, but most of it was new server and updating infrastructure, uh, monies that the board had talked about previously. Page five, um, under the twenty-three, twenty-one offices of the superintendent, and that's where your central office assessment and your special ed assessments are, um, you'll notice I've rolled everything up into just expenses with, um, not, no longer reflecting in the fiscal year twenty column, um, the netting of those revenues. We really just did that as a transition, um, to show the board the, the revenue that was being received at the SU level, um, just to be further transparent, but in doing that, it's actually harder when we go to get audited and report to the state, um, and it's caused some problems, so we're, we're gonna have to follow the direction of the state now and reflect just the true net, and that's truly what Highgate pays. Um, and so, I've rolled those up, um, again, reflective of Sheldon not being part of our, um, school district or SU, um, and that does have an impact. Central office assessment, I will, um, remind you that that's assessed based on the, um, current year's enrollment, and the special ed is currently being assessed based on use, um, and that's one of the things that would be, uh, a big, a big impact, or something that would be changed significantly, along with all the other costs, um, if you merged. Special ed is in a large, um, line in your budget, of a special ed assessment that would then be shared costs, um, rather than based on use, where you're only paying for Highgate's portion of what, you know, Highgate's cost and what Highgate uses. Those that would now be shared between all the towns, and the revenues would be received at the, by a single school district and sort of net off the top. Right now, they're applied back to the school where the costs were incurred.
I'll be honest with you, you lost me.
Okay, so, right now, we assess based on use.
Yep.
So, Highgate incurs cost for special ed, and that's a pretty big ticket item in your lot, in your general fund budget, um, and you get back fifty-six and a half percent, or whatever the percentage is, in reimbursement. If you merge, special, you know, as all costs, will then, um, how they will happen is, basically, everyone will incur the cost, the revenue will be taken off the top, and the net will be everyone's responsibility, but it won't be Highgate just paying for Highgate's special ed cost.
I get it, okay, I get it. It becomes one bucket, yeah, all three towns pay for it, uh, okay.
When we centralized special ed costs a few years, just a couple of years ago, the state's intention truly was to make it more of an assessment where costs were already shared, our boards made a decision to assess based on use, so it's one of the big factors that's really gonna show its, you know, um, it's gonna have a dramatic impact when they merge. Some schools, and it's not anything you have control over, it's just if you have high-cost kids moving, or kids that have severe needs, then that's, that's what happens, it drives your costs up.
District-wide, I really write in the middle, uh, for schools' cost for, for that line?
For special ed?
Yeah.
I don't know, do, do you have any information on that?
I would think you're in the middle, given, you know, the size of the schools, um, you know, you have a good-sized population of need here, um, for sure, um, but I haven't, I, in my old job, I analyzed all the schools, I haven't done that for this particular line, but I would think...
The special ed, I know Tanya, um, Hayes, our special ed director, probably has that information, we just haven't talked about it recently.
Yeah.
I do know, I would, and I will say, that, um, special ed out-of-district placements and high-need, um, placements or high-need services that have a high cost are increasing, and that's something that she's really been working with the admin team to try to analyze and look at, and how can we provide those services in a more economical way, or maybe even a, um, you know, a better way instructionally, so she's, she is working on it.
Laura, can I just say, I, I've, I've done it five times, I get a different number each time, but...
Oh.
When I, you say you roll up, I'm going from three thirty-one to five thirteen?
Yep.
So, when I do that, I'm well over a hundred thousand dollars. And you're saying, I, I, I don't know, I just, maybe I mistook what you said, but, that you're rolling it all up, and there shouldn't be that much of a change, but it's over a hundred thousand dollars, the net.
That's the increase, too, so, I guess that's what I would encourage you to do, is look at those bottom numbers, and, because really, I was just reflecting revenues in one and not in the other, but the nets is, the net is actually the same. All I've done is deduct them from those lines up above.
As in the subtotal, shoulder, ninety-nine seven.
Yeah, so, you're, the, the SU-wide special ed costs for Highgate, if they were assessed this way, would be going up that amount.
Okay.
And that's based on the percentage that has need.
I mean, less, less lines are better, I understand that, but, you know, but when you net them, and you still get a hundred thousand dollars, that's a lot of money.
Yeah. And part of that is central office.
Oh, yeah.
A small amount of that is central office, for sure.
Okay.
And a large amount of it is from, because of Sheldon not being there?
Absolutely. Central office in particular, when you take Sheldon out of the equation.
Yep.
You know, we don't stop doing everything that we're doing, because Sheldon is no longer part of us.
But they're not helping paying for it either, so...
Right.
Yeah.
But curriculum services, superintendent, and business office, and payroll, and all those things still have to happen, so...
That piece of the pie is, is going to, yeah, okay.
On page six, under principals' office, only, uh, just a couple increases, I'm just reminding you of things that we had that impacted your bottom line. Adjusted a couple of lines, like telephone and, um, two actuals, and, um, the equipment line, the seven-thirty line, I think there was an increase of about three thousand dollars for Alice's equipment, am I right, Pat, was it Alice's? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, nine-one-one, compliant.
Compliant, okay. Page seven, under plant operations and maintenance, the twenty-five forty, um, there's about thirty-four thousand dollars, um, in repair and maintenance, and then the tractor lease, so that's a portion of the increase that you'll see in the bottom line there, um, adjusting your repair and maintenance, uh, line, about twenty-four thousand, um, to get on a better repair and maintenance cycle, you know, and you have those funds available, and then the co- the tractor lease, we've estimated a ten thousand dollar payment for three years, but, um, we haven't done much more than estimate at this point for that. And the only other thing, um, before you look at your bottom line is your debt service, so right now, under the fifty-one hundreds, you're seeing about a little over sixty thousand dollars, and that's only your interest payment for year one, yep. After that, it'll be up to about a hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Yep.
So, overall, right now, um, looking at about a four hundred thousand dollar increase, that's a little bit inflated, um, because we've put those title positions in there, and I haven't, you haven't seen the offsetting revenue for that yet, but, um, also, if you remember your transportation, um, line, which I forgot to mention, but that expense now, I'm also netting the revenue, because that's received at the SU level, too, so that actually takes up some of the increase from the teacher line, so it's only about twenty thousand dollars of a difference, so, um, this increase is of eight percent is, you know, teacher salaries and all the things that I just went through, which is, I just wanted to take the time to go through that thoroughly, because of the, of this being handed sort of to the merge board, and, you know, I want everybody to make sure they're understanding what's happening. So, if we walk that over to the next sheet, which is a, a estimated tax rate calculation... Hi, do you want one of these, too? I can give you one.
Would you mind giving one of them?
We look at that, under expenses, that's your budget, so the 5.5 million, and that's up about $400,000. You take revenues into account, revenues are projected to be down slightly, even with the increase in title dollars. And that's largely because of your prior year's carryover. We always skip a year, and then we apply the carryover to, uh, the year after, to offset taxes. If you look at fiscal year 19, it's about $221,000. If you look at fiscal year 20, it's 73. So that's a portion of, of your impact on your tax rate as well. So if we look at education spending, which is truly what your taxes are based on, you're up about 12%. Now I'm getting to the, the part that's really not good for Highgate. The next thing to take into consideration is equalized pupils. And when your equalized pupils drop significantly, which is your two-year weighted average of students, it's not your enrollment. It has a very negative impact on your tax rate. So Highgate's equalized pupils are going down almost 21 from, from last year. Which impacts your spending per equalized pupil, obviously, cuz I'm dividing your education spending by equalized pupils. So your ed spending is going up almost $2,800. That's an increase of about 19%. Just keeping in mind that those are the numbers that go into your article language, so we'll have to do a really good job explaining what's happening there. The next number is your property yield. That's set by legislation. Right now, it's looking like it's gonna be going up $446. That's a $10,666. That is yet to be decided. It's very good, and that helps your tax rate when that goes up. But again, they could pick a different number, we just don't know. But I'm using what's projected right now. Gives you a projected equalized tax rate of 87.2 cents, which is an increase of about 9.2 cents. And then if we take your common level of appraisal into account, your common level appraisal's going down, I think, 2.5%, which again, has a negative impact on your tax rate. You're looking at about 82 cents for homestead, and 83, or almost 84 cents for non-homestead. It's about a 10-cent increase for the homestead tax rate. So unfortunately, some things working against you this year that are beyond your control. Chris knows that last night, I shared with the merge board the impact of the merged budget on the local towns, when basically, all the expenditures will be pulled together. All the revenue will be pulled together and net off the top. And the only real factor between towns would be your common level of appraisal, which all towns are going down. The impact on your tax rate, well, actually, let's say, the spending for equalized pupil would be 15,156 versus 16,486. And the impact on your tax rate is estimated to be 8.5 cents, if it was a merged approach, and people were sharing in the costs, and kind of absorbing some of that loss of your equalized pupils. Cuz not all schools are going down by 20, some are actually going up. It'd be 8.5 cents increase instead of 10. And I'm not saying that to convince anyone of anything, I just want you to know what the merge board heard last night. Connie, has her?
Oops, sorry.
Can I ask two questions?
Sure.
Can you tell me how many preschool kids we have in third, three-year-olds and fourth-year-olds this year?
I can tell you the projected kindergarten number next year.
Okay, but that wouldn't take into account the three-year-olds, then?
Not the three-year-olds.
Four-year-olds.
Just four-year-old, four, four-year-olds right now.
So if I came in tomorrow, could I get those numbers?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And my second question is, in the, the student count for Highgate in October 1st, 2018, shows that it's 30 students less than what we had in last academic year. So on the teacher salaries, the number here is going up. And if we have 30 new, well, first of all, my question is, how many of the Title I positions? How, what's, what's the number for that?
How many?
Yeah.
That are new to that line, or?
That are new to that line.
One FTE.
Okay. So how many, how many teachers does the, the figure 1.5 million reflect? How many teachers is that? Cuz I think I heard Pat say there are 19 classrooms now.
Classroom teachers.
Is that K through 6?
That's K through 6, correct.
Well, this would be reflective, that number would include unified arts and.
Yeah, just.
Interventionist.
Yeah, okay.
Certified staff.
First, tell me how many classroom teachers are there in there? 19?
19.
Thank you.
It should be noted that after next year, if the, you know, enrollment projections for the four-year-olds, three-year-olds, is sort of remain the same, we, we could be dropping a lot more. Cuz this fifth-grade class has approximately 50 students. And at the rate right now, we're, we're enrolling in the low-to-mid twenties for kindergarten. So each, this year, it's gonna be about a 15-student drop. The year after, could possibly be a 25-student drop.
So that suggests that the three-year-olds, there aren't a lot of three-year-olds.
Right, yeah.
And Connie, reading my own note here, which is why I make them. But because we do know that there's also a retirement that's been announced for next year, we're anticipating that retirement agreement, 35% of her most recent salary in that line as well. So that's a portion of that increase.
I did notice that.
Okay.
So we're bringing these local budgets to boards this month, because we are doing sort of the parallel-track thing. You know, and the discussion is whether we want to wait and see if we need to warn, I'm gonna back up. We don't have enough days to vote on a budget twice, anyway, right? So.
A merge?
Well, no, either, either one. Because, say you adopted today, you'd have 30, 40 days to do that. So either way you look at it, you would have a shot at a local budget, whether you warned it now, or whether you waited till May to do it. And you could have a special meeting and do it earlier in May if you wanted to. Right, it, again, I was describing to someone with the whole delay, not delay. It feels like you're at sea lurching from sort of side to side, in terms of what you are, are trying to advise for a course of action. Franklin did warn a local budget. Swanton is considering it, but they're not sure if, you know, the difference in tax rates and the difference of local budget versus merged budget might actually confuse people. Or go ahead, schedule them, warn them, you can cancel if it, if we find out that there is, that it's definitely gonna be a merger. I don't know, there's, you could make a list of pros and cons, and it seems pretty even, either way. So we're bringing them, whether you wanted to adopt something tonight, whether you want to give us some instruction on this budget, and we can come back again. What's your pleasure?
Who wants to take that ball?
What do you think?
Me?
Yeah.
Honestly, I think we should.
You've been going to these mergers.
Honestly, I like hedging my bets both directions. I like the idea of adopting the budget, and I'm just not in a hurry to warn it, I guess. But at the same time, I don't wanna drag my feet either.
I agree with that.
I'd like to, I'd like to have this ball rolling, and then after the new, the initial board comes online, and they make their decisions, and hopefully by then, the legislature has either made a decision or hasn't, and we move forward.
There's too many balls in the air.
Right, well, hopefully some of them land, and we can make a direction decision.
I totally agree.
And they're bowling balls, too.
To be honest with you, I, I kinda feel like once the initial board comes online, they're gonna set the tone, how we proceed.
And I don't think it's gonna take long. They're gonna move fast.
I don't think they have a choice.
No, I know, I agree.
Sounds good.
So, go ahead.
So I'm gonna bring it up again. Cost of snow removal for our parking lot, as obviously reflected anywhere is in here, is it?
It is in the merge budget we put in there.
Okay.
We, we left it out of this one, because of the, you know, the agreement we've had thus far.
Yeah.
In the merge budget, Franklin and Highgate put, snow removal cost or funds in there.
Okay.
Estimated.
Yeah, I didn't go last, I just.
Do you have an estimated?
We just took the, we have some schools that contract and thought about this, not, nothing, we guessed.
So I'd entertain a motion to adopt this budget, and then we need a date when to warn it, and all of that, right?
Yes, and we have to do a warning. If you're adopting, Laura's gonna start typing.
I will get article language up.
I'll make that motion.
Are we adopting, or are we still a work in progress?
If you, if you adopt, this is your bottom-line budget, this is it. Right, and the tax rate impact.
Excluding revenues yet?
Not in the tax rate calculation. So this is excluding revenues, but this is what shows you what, what happened to your taxes.
Okay, I got you.
Without any income sensitivity.
You gotcha.
Right, and that's a big piece, that we always forget.
But basically, you'd be pointing out, would the voters approve a budget for a 5.5 million? Which means ed spending of 5,620, which is a spending per equalized pupil of 16,486, which is an increase of $2,729, or 19.84%. That's basically what the article's gonna say. And I can type that for you.
Chris, is that going line with what we said on the merger board, as far as the, and Laura, you know, too, probably, and Julie? The, the equalized pupil, we, we've talked about that.
Well, actually, it's, for us, it's Highgate, it's actually more if we do our own budget this year. It's cheaper if we merge.
I agree.
From that aspect.
That's what I thought.
And everything kinda flipped, because Swanton School is growing, Franklin and Highgate's as well, especially Highgate's shrinking. So everything's flipped, Swanton's the one that's gonna kind of bear the burden.
Yeah, cuz the, right. I said, I know that that number wasn't what we talked about.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and this is why I'm no longer sure which way to go, because before, we were gonna get saddled. We were kinda breaking even, paying a little more. Now, if we go with our own, we're paying considerably more, so. I don't, you know, I mean, I don't know.
So I guess we warn it high, and come in, if the merger happens, we come in lower? Is that what happens?
Well, oh, I'm sorry, do you, do you mind if I answer that? So you'd have two budgets warned.
Right.
A merged budget and a local budget. And if you, in fact, merge, and you had voted on both budgets, your local budget will just disappear in sunset, because there will no, not be a Highgate School District anymore. So you don't have to, it just sort of goes away.
So should it gets accepted?
Even if it's, even if it's passed, but we merge, the, this budget would be, would mean nothing.
Okay.
So we wouldn't have to rescind it, before we thought maybe we would have to have another election and rescind it. We don't.
We basically get overruled.
This is one of those areas of law that nobody ever had to face before, so.
So it's, you get overruled, if the merger happens?
If the merger happens. If you know that the merger is going to happen, and you haven't had your vote yet, you'd have an opportunity to cancel the vote.
Right.
But if you adopt tonight, you only have a 30-to-40-day window.
Okay, so we might be.
You can't put it out too far.
So maybe we should table this till May?
I don't know.
Because if, if, if the merge, assuming the initial board comes online, they have their first meeting May 1st, and they adopt the budget then, the earliest they can have a vote, it would be June 4th.
Yeah.
You're talking three weeks. You're talking three weeks to May 1.
Yeah.
But the thing is, too, is you're aiming high right now. So if you come in lower.
We're aiming high.
Well, you're aiming high at this rate, if we merge, it's gonna come in less.
Well, it's the difference of merge and not merge.
I know, I understand that.
It's still a matter of whether Sheldon, no Sheldon. The biggest thing that would impact this is if they decided, but you would be, you would have too much money, basically, too much expense in this budget. If Sheldon left, your expenses would, if Sheldon stays, your expenses would go down.
Right.
So this is sort of worst-case scenario.
That's what I'm saying, it's kinda like aiming, aiming on the high side, but.
But in all likelihood, Sheldon will be not with us next year.
It's not looking good.
That's, that's what we're hearing from the Agency of Education, yes.
So even with a delay, they would still be?
They would still be moved, it was, they were moved separately outside of Act 46.
Wonderful. It's a gamble.
Well, you got a crystal ball, or you see?
So I, I guess, I don't know, what's the blur, what's the rest of the board's pleasure? Whether do we wanna wait till May, or do we want to adopt now and potentially have a vote before the merge vote? Which I do see how, just like.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris.
Would be, I can see how it'd be very confusing, for putting a local budget, and then a week later, they're voting on a local budget.
We have enough trouble explaining it all.
What the date would look like if you adopted today, is you would be voting on May 14th. Would be 31 to 3 days out. Or the 21st of May. And then two weeks, say you did the 21st, two weeks later would be the vote on the merge budget.
Wonder if we table it until next month?
Then you could get, and, well, if you really were gonna do that, I would move up. When is your May, the 9th? Well, that's not bad. If you did it on the 9th, you'd be looking just a little bit, probably the week after, June 4th.
Should we tentatively schedule maybe a meeting for May 2nd? Cuz that'll be the day after the initial board comes online, maybe the tone will be set by then, but, I don't know. I, I, I don't know. This is all due to me, so, I don't know.
We are meeting on the 1st already.
Right, but.
May 1st, we're meeting.
Well, May 1st, the initial board's meeting, so.
Right.
But not the Highgate court.
Right. But you're right, the tone might come out of that meeting.
Might sound like a good idea.
So table it, is what you're saying?
There's too many things happening. I, 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 I don't know. Yeah.
What worries me about adopting it right now is that we're gonna put a, a vote in front of our voters on the 14th, and then two weeks later, we're gonna have a second, and that's.
So, so we're better off to table it, right?
Well, your second round's gonna be a lot less people, cuz I think they already did it.
Well, that's true. That's what I was worried about last night. I just don't see how people are going to be able to follow.
I already did that, that's what they're gonna say, I already did that.
But I can also see waning, doesn't seem like a great idea either.
Well, the, the problem I have is, I mean, we're having budget discussions in April.
I know, we're dying here.
You know, I don't wanna keep pushing the budget off, because we need one.
Yes.
So.
And I don't have any concerns that our, our local schools and towns will, will adopt local budgets. You know, they, they will be understanding of the situation we're in. Um, you know, they, they will be understanding of the situation we're in, um, because of the merger, I, I, you know, I, I think that is an easy thing to communicate, people have been following all of it, maybe not following it cause it's complicated, but they understand it's going on and that there's an impact to why we haven't had budgets. And again, I know people feel really strongly one way or the other about wanting to have a budget or not, um, you know, if it's a matter of two or three weeks difference, I, I don't know that that makes that much of a difference, um, about having a budget. And I think you do have that confusion factor, people are looking at their tax rate and then one piece of paper says it's one amount, another piece of paper says it's, you know, I can't predict.
There's also the variable of MBU, because Highgate, if you, if it's, if it's the way we're doing things now, this is only one part of Highgate's tax rate.
Yep.
So, without MBU.
Yeah.
It, it, so that's a whole, because we have a union high school right now, it adds another layer of complexity.
That onion's pretty thick, ain't it, all those layers?
Makes me cry, yeah.
I'm gonna withdraw my second to that motion, if Mr. Flintwood withdraws it, then we'll, uh.
Table it?
Just like, right?
Then we can, uh.
So, does, does it not make sense to adopt that and not warrant it until after the May first? At least you've got something set for, it doesn't get all changed up.
But if we, if we adopt it, then we only have thirty, forty days.
Have to warrant it, once you.
And if it changes, we have to go back to the table again.
What you can do is say to us, we'd like to see something change, or we'd like to keep it same, you can say that to us, so that we're not that's not me, we're not endlessly tinkering with it, or, you know.
Well, I, I would, I mean, Pat and Laura obviously weigh in on this, but I would like to see it kinda, kinda draw a line in the sand for now. Unless we need to change it more, but, um, I would say at this point, let's stick with this one. Unless somebody disagrees, but, okay, then I would like to see it stay where we're at, you know, I mean, obviously if something has to get changed, it has to.
Or better. Not worse.
Drop that bottom line.
Magic money.
Magic money.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there not a state statute that requires local school districts to approve a budget by a certain date?
June thirty.
June thirty, so, if we.
We wait till May one, we've got time.
Right, it would be first week of June.
And, but then you need to give your, we need to give ourselves the wiggle room in case the first vote on the budget is not approved. And we're still a local district.
We still don't have time to do two votes between now and June thirty.
Okay.
And then it falls to, we'd have to operate with eighty percent, eighty-seven percent of our last year's budget.
Ouch.
Which at least we have, uh.
You can borrow up to eighty-seven percent.
You have that protection and you go out again.
They don't automatically just.
Which would make things tight, but.
Doable.
To operate.
Yeah, right now, at this moment, the risk for a local district not passing, because you have the protection of being able to borrow eighty-seven percent is very different from the merged districts if it doesn't pass, there is no, right now, there is no protection, should the budget not pass. There is no law that would allow the merged district to borrow, so, hopefully, hopefully that's going to be addressed.
Oh, my God. Just as Cliff is there, no, nothing else.
There's language proposed, but apparently other people don't like it.
Oh, they'll, Republicans.
We're doing a lot of this.
Representatives.
So, since we had a motion, they rescinded, Richard rescinded, do we, then I guess we're just tabling it till ne- uh, next month? And then, uh, we also would like to leave the budget as it is till next month?
Do we want to have a special meeting for that?
What's the board's plan is, do you wanna wait the extra seven days, or do we wanna have it seven days prior to, cause our next meeting's May ninth? Our initial board meeting, the new merge board meeting will be May first, we couldn't meet May second. Uh, I don't know if seven days makes a huge difference, but cause I mean, it still falls in that thirty to forty days, you know, if we met on the ninth, we'll just warn thirty days.
That'd be a priority that night.
Right.
Yeah, it's up to you guys, I, I, I can, I can do whatever, but I, I agree with Chris, I think the ninth is not much of a difference from the second.
The ninth, we'd put it to the. The eleventh of June. Or, I mean, that's on a Tuesday.
June eleven?
Yeah.
And so, you might be looking at a local school budget on June eleven.
Could be.
That's graduation week. Tough to have a town, cause town meeting will have to be at night, I'm assuming.
You could do it the week after, but you don't wanna do that either, so, you could do the second.
Is that a floor vote, or is that Australia?
Uh, local budget would be a floor vote. And we'd also have to do our elections with the budget, right?
Yes.
And if we're adopting a local budget, it means we're gonna be operating another year uh, as a local district, correct?
If we don't know by June. We'd have to laugh.
Better than crying, I guess. We did a lot of that.
Yeah, you could do, if you met on the second, you could hold your vote on the fourth of June.
Which is the one the, the merge.
The same timeline as the merge.
It has to be on a Tuesday?
No, but, I, yeah, that's the tradition.
Yep.
People tend to do votes on Tuesdays.
So, it's either the fourth or the, the, uh, the eleventh.
The eleventh, yeah.
Do you wanna, do you wanna change to the ninth meeting?
Well, here's the, if we do the ninth, we have to do it on the, the eleventh, if we do the second, then we're, the best case, we're doing on the fourth, which the merge potentially, merge budget's gonna be the fourth, I don't wanna compete with that budget.
No.
If you did it on the same night, we'd be able to talk about. I might need to bring some help.
Well, the other thing is, I would think that you would have one vote or the other, right?
By that point?
By that point?
I would hope so, but.
Two months ago, I would've said, yeah, definitely, now, I have no idea.
Oh, goodness gracious.
I might not make it that far.
I'm just thinking, we don't have to stick with the ninth either, we could change the ninth out to some other date, whatever works.
Well, I think some people tell meeting dates that suggest trying a meeting on a Saturday.
Well, we have that, April twenty-seventh, we have.
Okay.
The info meeting at ten AM.
Line up for a local.
For a local election.
Right, so it wouldn't have to necessarily be the same day, it's a thirty to forty day window.
So, let, let's, let's do this, let's stay with May ninth for our meeting, um, hopefully by then we'll have a lot more information.
Information, yeah.
I feel like I've said that every month for six months now, so I'm, I'm losing faith, but.
Eventually, we will know something.
Don't do that, Chris.
Eventually, something will happen.
Eventually, you'll be right on the ball, buddy.
That's right.
You are getting more information, it's not any, it's not helpful.
At some point, it's hard to feel like.
They give us lots of information, I don't know if any of it's useful, but. Right.
Things are moving in a direction, I mean, it's kind of, you know, the, the school districts, you know, all of us that did delayed our organizational meetings, even the ones that delayed them the most, they all seem to have, I mean, it's, things are happening. Um, really, I think the big piece is the legislature right now, and they, they seem to be doing nothing, right now.
Now we're keep paying them.
I can't imagine being in Montclair with thirty-some odd school districts and limbo and just sit there.
Right over.
Right over, yeah.
Well, you know.
Guess I'm in the wrong profession.
I don't wanna, I don't, you know, politically, I sometimes, it's easier for people to say, well, I wanted to vote for it, but they wouldn't. You know, it's, it's a comfortable place, I mean, a number of people feel passionately about it and some people, maybe not so much, but it's maybe an easy way out for some, I don't know.
And they're working on water quality tomorrow.
Water quality.
An eight million dollar water quality issue, so, that's what's on the agenda.
Well, that's more important, yeah.
It is to the frogs.
Not that water quality's not.
Turtles.
Turtles.
Turtles. Don't forget the turtles.
Don't forget the. Little water beetle hanging around.
All right, so, let's move on.
See you, Ty, thank you.
See you, Ty.
Did we table that? Good guy?
What?
Do we have to table that, or?
We did.
Okay.
So, we're gonna move on to superintendent's report.
So, I didn't have one attached because for some reason I didn't type it up. I, I know that will shock you, um, I'm struggling to read this on the screen, cause when you project, everything gets really big. Those are a couple of our high school students, um, Ella Partlow and Emma Medor, uh, they were STEM fair, you know, the big STEM fair? That, um, the, the science fair that happened at MBU, uh, many of our students went to the state science fair. Emma was a gold medalist. And Emma was a silver medalist, a lot of our students placed really high, um, in the state. And I included, and I will email this out to you, but, uh, all the students who participated are listed, how, how students placed. Um, honestly, just really wanna thank the MBU science teachers for challenging their students to do really great projects. Jim Daly made, uh, science fair a focus for the science department, uh, local businesses and community members came and supported. Uh, I was one of the judges too, I think I, I joked in one of the meetings how, uh, I was a good science student, but there's a big difference between being a good science student and standing next to a judge who's an actual scientist. And how, you know, I judged everything like a teacher, like, I like your content and your writing and your scientific method is evident, but they were looking for the hard science, so, our kids who went to the state science fair, um, were kids who really had a lot of, uh, uh, good judges, uh, in our, from our community who knew their stuff, um, uh, and, and we had some pretty impressive work, and it's one of, I think, the, um, in, more impressive things than MBU does. Uh, is their science project.
I think my granddaughter really liked it as well, she went to. Pretty impressive.
Yeah, it was, I will say, it was very interesting to go down, we went, my daughter was in it, and we went down, it was very interesting, a lot of presentations and not necessarily my cup of tea, but I, I still enjoyed it and I, you know, it was interesting, we stayed for the awards and stuff, and it was nice to hear our students get awards and.
So, I. There was a lot of really, uh, I shouldn't say more intelligent, but they were really sophisticated experiments and, and displays there that really went in depth.
Well, and what I like about our science fair is that all kids do it, right? So, the fact that it's differentiated so that students who are really high interest, high achieving science students are doing something really, as you said, just incredible experiments. And the science they're doing is, is at a high level, and then you have students who, they are with, they're not necessarily doing like this very complex experiment, but they're learning in an authentic way, the scientific method. And they're learning about how you calculate the data and how you present it and how you interpret it, and it's incredibly rich hands-on learning that is important standards for our students, and they're doing it together in a way that's authentic and representing the community. And everyone I did was a really interesting presentation, the kids learned a lot from the work that they did. Whether they placed and went to the state level or not, um, the students had a lot of deep learning that took place. So, it's one of those, those learning experiences that really all kids get something very deep out of, so, I don't know, I find it very impressive. I put a lot of legislative updates there, um, I know that you probably all get them from the Montclair Association. But, uh, you know, as we're winding down, it's sort of, at the beginning, we have all of these proposed bills, and then it sort of filters down to what we think that people are gonna focus on, the lead in water bill is a big one. Um, and, uh, let me see, the lead bill, S forty, um, at this point they, they were, they were discussing the differences, how many parts per billion that the water can have, and, uh, I think that they've come to agreement on that. But the big issue is finding, um, I think right now, they're proposing that the state would pay for seventy cent, seventy percent of the remediation, um, and the educational organizations, school board, VSA, uh, principals association, they're, they're trying to really push for it to be a hundred percent funded, so that schools are not paying for this. And if the problem is not in the school building itself, but it's the municipal, then that's not gonna be something we have to co- bear the cost of, but it is something to pay attention to anytime.
There will be ongoing costs too, because of more testing, annual testing, you know, all that stuff.
So, I mean, it's looking like it's probably gonna pass, it's just a matter of how much.
I know our Basbo group has a very strong opinion, tomorrow they're actually drafting a letter to, on this issue.
So, I think that's the one that I am most concerned about or thinking about, um, uh, the the delay bill, even what's in here is old, so, this was just saying that the senate had approved it, but as we discussed before, the house is not approving, and so it's sort of stuck in conference.
And they're gonna change it again? So, had to ask, go back to the senate, the senate will change it again, go back to the representative.
Could very well play ping pong a little bit.
Yeah.
And then back to the finger point.
Lot of, easiest way to make a decision is not to make a decision.
Exactly, and my hope, and I did reach out to our organizations to say, you know, and I may reach out to our representatives. If you're not gonna do this, I understand, could you please put into the miscellaneous education bill something that would give us a default budget, I don't even care whose language you pick. The house and the senate both had something, I think, so, um, and, and Act one seventy-three, which is the special ed funding law, which is a very big deal, they're actually talking about delaying that for a year, and, uh, I don't know whether they will or not. Um, but the, um, I'm actually gonna be reviewing the rules for Act one seventy-three that I think will give some input into the process, they've written the rules and I hear they may not be all that great. So, that's part of why some folks are, are advocating for a delay. So, we'll see, and if they do do that, they would stick that in the miscellaneous education bill, so, why not a default budget, that's what I say.
Sure.
That's kind of what I have for today.
Okay. Uh, and two, let's see, we are so far behind, I'm looking at, uh, teacher contracts.
So, I wanted to, I think you probably want to talk about that in executive session. Um, but one of the things that I'm gonna look for, for a motion tonight is to authorize the school board to, chair to sign teacher contracts. And we can talk about, uh, all of that, um, just because we had some negotiations and association issues that we'd be talking through. I think probably you'd wanna find any for executive session there.
I agree. Uh, old business updates from the MVSD transition board, hey Steve, you wanna take this?
There you go, buddy, there you go, what, what's the update on that, huh, huh, Steve?
Updates from, well, we got together last night, um, basically, there's still a lot of discussion about budgets also. And, um, there's some people that have some opinions about the way they think. there's some people that have some opinions about the way they think the information should be portrayed. Um, we've got emails from Julie and an outsider, you know, giving, um, their input. Um, the transition board is actually just working forward. There's not a whole lot that we can do at this point until we do have a decision, so. Um, we talked a lot about, um, budgets and numbers and, um, breaking out different towns. Um, I actually had a conversation with Laura through emails and stuff as to, you know, uh, what was going on, but there's a new software package in place, and so some accounts are being adjusted and moved around, but, um, it's in process and still a lot of work to be done.
Uh, I, I found it interesting too, learning how other schools operate, whether we found through doing the budgets and stuff that different schools do different things in different ways, not, not that anybody's wrong, just learning how different schools work. Uh, the other thing is, we're really trying to figure out how to convey information. Um, we have, we're trying to do two informational meetings for our Warren vote in April, and that's on the articles of agreement that the amendment committee put together and then the transition board adopted, uh, which in those articles has language for equal representat- equal representation, which currently we would have, but we only have six, two from each town. Uh, within that, we have, uh, nine, three from each town, um, has, um, transfer properties, it has, uh, the new school, the district name, which is Mississauga Valley School District. I'm forgetting half of it, but.
Not being able to close a school very easily.
Yes, thank you. That was a big one. Uh, we put in there, uh, some protections for, it would have to be a three-quarters vote from the board to put it in front of voters, and then the vote to close the school would be within the town the school's in. So let's use Highgate as an example. If the board decided that we should close Highgate, the board, the taxpayers of Highgate would be the ones to have the final say.
In the articles of agreement too, there were certain default items that we couldn't change, but, um, we are still tossed around the idea of trying to change a few of them.
We did that, yeah, we, we've done that. Again, we, we, we put them together and we've, we're ready to put them in front of voters. Uh, that's, as of last night's meeting, we don't have any more scheduled meetings. Uh, our board would dissolve, um, May first or April thirtieth, when the Warren, because at the April thirtieth vote, you'll be voting on the initial board, the first six members of that board. Um, we, we feel like we brought the budget about as far as we can. Uh, it's still a work in progress. That'd be about all I've got from the transition board. Then Act forty-six updates, we've actually talked a lot about those. The legislature's kind of hashing out their part.
The Judge Mello decision's probably gonna come out tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And now that's, and, uh, there's actually a couple parts of our lawsuit that they think will get moved on to, um, the Supreme Court. So that's still an active.
Litigation.
Litigation, yeah. I think that's about all I have for Act forty-six. Seems pretty quick, actually. So.
In a nutshell.
On to, I would need a, a reason to go into executive session, which, uh, we have teacher and administration and non-union contract discussions, which would, uh, premature public knowledge would clearly place the board and, and/or other party at a substantial disadvantage.
I'll make a motion, go into executive session.
Oh, second.
Uh, who are we gonna invite in? Julie, you need Laura, right?
Laura, did you wanna stay for executive session?
The contracts, then.
Yeah, I can't remember whether you would.
I don't mind listening, yeah, plus I'm in a loop about who.
And then, uh, at least probably Pat for the teacher part and the non-union part, obviously. So, any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor going to executive session at eight thirty-four. Same apply by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. We are in executive.